All right, thank you very much for your patience on that. I apologize for being just a couple of minutes late. And welcome to our joint meeting for the Kattati City Council and the Successor Agency, to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency. And today's Tuesday, January 8th of 2019. And if we could start our meeting with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Delosso?
Here.
Vice Mayor Skelman?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here. And before we go into the Pledge of Allegiance, I do like to, I'm gonna follow what former Mayor Landman, since it's been a month since you were mayor now, was doing. I think this is a great thing, and that way everybody will know other people here that, as far as our council and staff. So my name is John Delosso, I'm the mayor, welcome to our council chambers. We have Vice Mayor Wendy Skelman to my left. And continuing left, we'll start with Councilmember Mark Landman, Councilmember Sue Harvey, and Councilmember John Moore. And we also have city staff available. We have our city manager Damian Obed, our city attorney Robin Donahue, our community development director Vicki Parker. I'm not doing this in order that you guys are sitting, I think you saw that already. Chief of Police Michael Parrish, and our city engineer and director of public works Craig Scott. And the person that makes this meeting happen and flow smoothly, our city clerk Lauren Burgess. Thank you, Lauren. All right, with that, I would actually ask our soon-to-be reserve police officer to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And if everybody could please stand.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Anthony, appreciate that. I didn't warn you about that, did I? It just kinda happened, I know. All right, we're at item four, which is approval of minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. And we have our minutes from December 11th of 2018.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion to second, any changes, any further comments?
One abstention.
One abstention. So we will have, no, let's do it this way. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Yes.
There, now we got it official, perfect, thank you. All right. Well, the next item, wow. Really? We're just gonna just dive right into reception? Son of a gun, okay, well, you know, there's nothing wrong. Eating food, it's still partly the holidays. And, I mean, is this my opportunity to say some things about? Okay, good, good. So we're going to recess in just a moment, but we want to thank Mark Landman, who was our mayor this past year for 2018. Mark has been mayor twice now, if I'm not mistaken. And it's, it's an interesting position, it's not a position of power. It's been made very clear by the four councilmembers sitting to my side that it's not a position of power, so I understand that, and I accept that, thank you very much. But I want to personally, Mark, I want to thank you for your leadership this past year, and it's been a pleasure working with you. I think we've been together in the council six years now, so thereabouts, I know it seems like 12, doesn't it, sometimes? Sometimes. And I'd like to at least, before we have this recess, open it up to see if there's any other council comments you'd like to make, brief as they may want to be. I'll start with Councilmember Moore.
I think it's been a pleasure working with Councilmember Landman, and I think he did a commendable job as mayor, and hopefully the future mayors can follow in those big shoes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, Mark, thank you for your leadership last year, it was a pleasure. And I think you did a really good job, and at times I know that you felt a little constrained, and you were awesome at working through that. So I commend you on that, and wish you all the best in your next four years.
Vice Mayor Skelman?
So I'll just echo what everybody else said, it was a real pleasure having you at the helm for this last year, and keeping us on track, and just sort of maintaining order, and so really appreciate all of the hard work and extra effort that goes into that position, so thank you.
Yes, I will look at you and acknowledge you, and I will allow you to speak.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes, indeed.
It's fun to be on the other side, and thank you all very much. I'll be brief, because I got to make some outgoing comments at our last meeting when we had our vote for our new mayor and new vice mayor. But I will just say, I'm very grateful, this is something that is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And how lucky am I? I've got to do it twice, so that's really remarkable. And I wouldn't have been able to do it without, number one, the support of the community. Thank you all very much for the faith you placed in me. And two, for the wonderful colleagues I have here to work with, and the wonderful staff we have here at the city of Kattati. The only look good I learned in the fire department is your crew makes you, and I'm very fortunate to have a good community and a good crew to work with, so thank you all very much.
And with that, Mark, we have this lovely plaque, and I think it would behoove us, if a staff member has their iPhone ready, that we'll go out front, take a quick picture, and then we will break and recess for, for some treats, then we'll come back for some more city business. We're gonna go into now item six, which is announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments, as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Second item, the city of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 PM by appointment in the community development department at City Hall, as part of its Kattati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. Third item is the Rona Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit www.sonoma library.org. The fourth item is the Kattati Historical Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and by appointment. For more information, call (707) 794-0305. The fifth item is citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixl.com, or texting your zip code 94931, those of you living in our city limits, to 888-777. And the final announcement is the city offers a variety of recreation programs for all ages. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. Now we are on item seven, which is presentations, and I'm gonna turn this over to the chief of police for an introduction of a new reserve police officer.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Anthony, come on up. So this is our newest reserve officer, Anthony Garber, and yes, we did swear Anthony in last council meeting as well, but this is a different Anthony. So Anthony, he is a local person, growing up in Rona Park, and he's actually been a Kattati resident as well. He's a graduate of Rancho Kattati High School, and like just about all of our staff, he's a graduate of the Santa Rosa JC Police Academy. He actually has previous law enforcement experience as a Lake County Deputy Sheriff. And Anthony is currently in the military reserves. He's a soldier in the Army National Guard, in the capacity of a fire control specialist, and I bet you the mayor's gonna ask you about that, Anthony. And Anthony begins his training tomorrow. So I'm gonna take this opportunity to give him the oath of office now, and then his wife, Lindsay, is gonna do the badge painting.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Anthony Garber.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the United, of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
For a purpose of obligation.
For a purpose of obligation.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to.
The duties on which I'm about to.
All right, so Anthony, weight of the world is now off your shoulders, you already got a smile on your face, this is the easy part now. So we're gonna grill you, we've got a series of questions, it's gonna be about an hour and a half.
Okay.
So you okay with that?
I have my cheat sheet right here, too.
Excellent, excellent. We usually like to just ask some questions, but first I want to open it up to you, if you want to tell us a little bit more about, you know, your background, your history, we heard a little bit from the chief, if you've got people that you'd like to introduce, I see you've got a fan club with you here, I've already met your grandmother, and she's great. And one last thing I want to say, I'm always concerned when we have a wife pinning the badge on an officer, because I never know how they're gonna react to that, and if the officer's gonna get hurt. So this, it worked out well tonight, thank you.
I did the dishes, so we're good.
Excellent.
No extra poking on that one. Well, as you guys heard, my name's Anthony Garber, I grew up in Rona Park for 23, 24 years, went to Rancho Kattati High School, graduated from there in 2012. I've always been kind of a outgoing outdoorsy kind of guy, try to stay outdoors, and play as many sports as possible, keep myself out of trouble. About a year ago, I decided to take the plunge to join the California National Guard as a fire control specialist. I spent a few months in Oklahoma over the summer, which was pretty hot, learning some skills and other trade, and now I'm back and really fortunate, and I'd like to thank all my family here, and, you know, two or three rows back, and for the support that they gave me for this.
Excellent, thank you. I won't push you any further than that, I swear. Why don't we go ahead and go around the table, we'll start with Councilmember Moore, if you have any questions or comments?
Anthony, I just want to say welcome. I do have a question, you were deputy in Lake County?
Yes, sir.
And you said Kattati is much better than Lake County?
May have mentioned it a few times.
Well, welcome, and I think you're gonna be joining a pretty good crew, and you've got a fantastic staff to work with, and I hope you have a long and fruitful career, and that ten-year contract will go quickly.
Okay, perfect.
Councilmember Harvey?
Well, welcome, Anthony, I'm not gonna, I'll give you a pass, I'll keep my eyes and ears open, though, and I may have questions for you later, but welcome, and thank you for joining our team in Kattati.
Thank you.
Councilmember Landman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Anthony, first of all, welcome, I think it's really great, particularly when we have somebody who's gone to high school in the community, now protecting the community, and I argue that people who've gone to high school, they're the best people to make officers. They actually know the community, and they know a lot of how our folks work pretty well, so. Now, I know that the chief suggested that we leave this to the mayor, but since I get to ask questions before he does, I'm gonna take advantage of this now that I'm over here and ask you, tell me a little more about being fire specialist.
So, the name is kind of confusing, a lot of people think it's regarding firefighting, but I'm actually in the field of artillery, I am the, I take in data, I put it into a computer coordinates, different kinds of rockets and cannons to use, and I put it out to the actual guns themselves, and then they shoot them, shoot them at whoever is shooting at us.
So you're good for pressure situations?
Yeah, I'd like to think so.
Because obviously this is something you want to get right.
Yes, exactly.
Very good, well, it sounds like that's worked very well, welcome to Kattati.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here.
Vice Mayor Skelman?
Well, I'll echo what everybody was saying, welcome to Kattati, or welcome back to, to where you grew up, so that's really fantastic, that you, that you have that familiarity with the area, and I appreciate as well your military service, so thank you for serving our community as well as the nation, so. Really appreciate that, my father served, other family members, and so I know what a sacrifice it can be, so thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And we look forward to having a long fruitful career here in Kattati.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure why the chief thought I would be interested in this fire thing, especially when it's rockets and cannons. I don't know if there's something you're thinking I do on the weekends in my backyard, I'm not quite sure.
You're watching.
But it's good to know that's what it's about, clearly, appreciate that. So we're not gonna pressure you anymore, really appreciate it. Training starts tomorrow, is that what I heard? So, you know, you're welcome to leave the council early to get enough bedtime, and you need to rest, I get that, so that's entirely up to you. Thank you for being here, and we certainly wish you a long and happy career here in Kattati.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Anthony.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I'm just keeping an eye on the crowd to see if they're gonna start filtering out or not. Which is fine if you do, I'm not gonna hold that against you.
I have a meeting, Charlie.
You're free to go then, absolutely, it's a great reason. All right, okay, we're gonna move on to item eight, which is our honorary mayor, and we have Zara Walton of Tech High. Zara, come on up. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hello, my name is Zara Walton, and I am a senior at Technology High School this year, which is currently located on Sonoma State's campus. I'm excited to be honorary mayor tonight, and to represent my school in our local government. I've lived in Kattati since I was two months old, so I've grown up here for almost all of my life, and even went to elementary school at Thomas Page Elementary. I love our small-town environment, and the things that Kattati has had to offer. I've always had passions for theater and dance, which I've been able to further in our town through local community organizations. And I've also had passions in soccer, which I've been able to further through my school. We actually won NCS Division III championships this last fall, which is pretty exciting. As for my future passions, I really enjoy marine biology and conservation, which I hope to further when at college this fall, where I study. I just finished all my college applications, so I'm unsure as to where I'm going, but I'm excited for the future, and I look forward to gaining skills that I can hopefully bring back and share with my community. Thank you.
That's excellent, thank you very much. And I'm gonna apologize, because I even asked you, how do you pronounce your name, is it Zara or Zera? And you clearly told me Zera, like Sarah. I wrote it down, and I said, welcome, Zara. You know, it's just, it's amazing, but, there you go. First meeting, it's going downhill in a rapid hurry. Why don't we see if we have any questions from any of the councilmembers, I'll start with Councilmember Landman this time.
All right, well, first of all, very pleased, I'm looking at the audience, I'm listening to the name, I'm listening to the school you went to, I'm guessing we have a West Side honorary mayor from West Side of Kattati.
Yes, indeed.
Right on. Glad to see it, that's a good thing. Tell me a little more about the marine biology, how did that become something of interest to you?
Well, my grandparents live in Hawaii, on the Big Island, so we've been visiting there since I was younger, and I've always liked the ocean, and swimming, and turtles, and all that fun stuff. And then my mom got me the opportunity to go out to the Bodega Marine Laboratory and volunteer with them, and work with baby elephant seals, and I just, I, I've always loved animals, and I just really have a passion for saving them, so.
Perfect, well, good to hear, it sounds very exciting, very nice to meet you, Zara.
You too.
Microphone's off, sorry. Vice Mayor, Skelman?
Well, nice to see you, I introduced myself with a quick break that we had there, so you did a really good job, it's a lot of pressure, having all these people staring at your back, and having this up here in this very formal setting, so very good job with your presentation, so thank you. And I was interested with your theater and dance background, just because I have sort of an artistic background myself, did you get a chance to do any of the, like, audit classes at SSU, or anything like that?
I haven't. Both my parents got, have art degrees in art, like, dance and fine arts, so I've always had an appreciation for theater, and my aunt worked on cruise ships, and did some Broadway stuff, so I've just, you know, I've, I love science, I go to a science/technology STEM school, but I also appreciate the arts, and so being able to do that through dance and theater has been really nice.
That's great, no, it's good to have that balance, so good for you, and I'm, it bodes well for your future, too, that you've got both sides of the brain going, so good job, thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Harvey?
Well, welcome, thank you for being our honorary mayor. You may or may not know, but our recreation department has some children's theater productions that are put on, so at some point, if you have some spare time, I'm sure that they can always use assistance like yours. I know you may go off to college, but if you happen to be around, that is something that, the kids' productions are really wonderful, and it sounds like you like working with young animals, probably young kids, too, I'm guessing, but thank you for being our honorary mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore?
Zara, thank you for being mayor, it's great, it's great to see a little hometown prodigy coming up, and coming back to the community and being successful, so I wish you success in your further endeavors, and I'm not gonna give you any homework, because Mayor Delosso will do that very well, he likes to do that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and yes, he does, speaking of him in the third person. First of all, so your, your interest in, it sounded like marine mammals, but, I mean, animals in general, but marine mammals, so I work at this little park, it's called Point Reyes National Seashore. We've got about 1,500 elephant seals out there, and they're dying for attention. So there's, we should probably talk offline, there's probably a lot of opportunities out there, working with our scientists in counting, tagging, if you've, anybody here ever put a tag in an elephant seal's flipper? Okay? And if you haven't, if you haven't, it's quite the joy, because you don't really want to make those big ones upset, because they can move really quick, so, yeah, we'll definitely connect on that. Okay, so the homework assignment, it's, it's pretty tough. I like to always ask our honorary mayors at their first meeting, because you're coming back in two weeks, to talk to your friends, and come up with some ideas, some over the years we've been able to implement, others we haven't, of, you know, what maybe is missing in the city for your age group, you know, is there an activity you'd like to see, is it something our recreation department could put on? So talk to your friends, we'd love to hear if there's ideas out there, and those go on a list, and we pass them out to staff, and saying, what can we implement, and what can't we implement? So before you leave, would you like to introduce anybody in the audience, those people that you know, preferably?
Sure, I've got my family here, my mom, and my grandma, and my father, they're here with me today.
Excellent, great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It is a school night?
It is.
It is a school night. And so with that in mind, I know you don't necessarily need to stay late, and thank you very much, we will see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, we'll move on to item nine on our agenda, which is approval of final agenda, do we have any changes?
Thank you, Mayor, no proposed changes.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move to item 10, which is citizen's business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item or items listed on the consent calendar, or any matter or matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to city council policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. I have no speaker cards, but is there anybody who would like to? Yes, Ms. Alderman?
First, I'd like you to acknowledge that where there was a statement put for the George Berich, despite I have a, I did have a limited power of attorney to speak for him. Okay, I'd like to say thank you, Ms. Walton, she lives across the street, but we hardly ever see each other, so it's great to see you, representative of our neighborhood. The, I wanted to talk about the lack of services. My friend is homeless, she lives in Kattati. She is not, she's out there tonight, in the rain, they, you can't even, in the cold, she's, and you can't even open a storm shelter. You, you won't put the homeless on the agenda. This has been going on for three years. How long are you gonna keep ignoring every, that there's? Mr. Moore said there was one homeless person last council meeting, there is one visible homeless person to the count. There are at least dozens of people who are, have temporary shelter, are couch surfing, there's lots of students, there's people that are temporarily, the, all that count does is count the obviously homeless. Yes, we don't have them roaming our streets, but we don't, but they are out there, and you won't even acknowledge them after three years. When are you gonna put homeless on the agenda? I'm tired of, and George does it, too, you don't ever address it. And that, here it is, my friend, once again, will be out in the, we can't take her in, we're at full. You know, where, there are homeless, and you're not dealing with it. And I'm tired also of your lack of caring about people. Mr. Moore, for six months now, has refu, he called me fat explanation crazy on his city email. Can I get an apology after six months? Can I get even acknowledgement? No. You guys don't care about people. You have up here in your high horse, or whatever, not high horse, but you think you're so important, you're not more important than I am. You, you should be the, doing decent things to decent, for decent, there, for people that live in this city, you're not. Where's the senior services? Where's anything for adults in recreation? You are not doing your jobs.
Thank you. Do not, I'm sorry?
No.
Okay, thank you. And as Ms. Alderman pointed out, too, she had a letter, a three-page letter from Mr. Berich, so we're gonna turn this in to make it part of the so we're gonna turn this in to make it part of the official minutes of this meeting tonight. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Mr. Kirkman.
Thank you, excuse me. I have two items I wanna address this evening. First of all, I appreciate that we're hiring people from Ronard Park to serve us, I very much appreciate it, the representative from Tekei, local person. Mayor Deloso, you asked her to survey her friends and find out what you could do to improve things for a selective group and essentially improve the city. I've asked you repeatedly to do what Ronard Park does and survey everybody in Katari. It would be easy for you to simply duplicate their survey or pick and choose what you think is reasonable. It's their third year of having to survey, you choose not to generate anything from the public except for a few workshops for selective things like cannabis. It would be nice to, with your water bill or simply with the newspaper, have a open survey where you might hear from some people, other than every four years when you folks, some of you canvass and knock on doors. It would be better to have something that's a little bit more formal and reasonable. Many people don't come to these meetings, generally speaking, there are two or three citizens that harass you. On the other matter, it has to do with the lighting situation. Very impressive park lighting, um, looks kind of like Las Vegas. Certainly, there have been other attempts in the past, you had Christmas tree lights for a while, those kind of fell by the wayside and fell out of the trees, 'cause they were in the trees. You do have the, uh, snowflakes that a former head of public works purchased for you, they were, I believe, twenty-five dollars apiece, and certainly they're worthwhile as they do, they leave a little something for the downtown area to have snowflakes. In regards to the park, unfortunately, many of the lights are on throughout the day. I don't know that we need lights on during the day, I don't know that the park is so crime-ridden that, uh, we need twenty-four hour lighting. Another matter was then Mayor Landman discussed the need for security and safety on bike paths, and lighting that needed to be on all the time, as opposed to, say, solar or on-demand lighting. For your information, the lighting that is on intersections, usually under streetlights, they are not on all the bike paths, or simply where it joins the, uh, the sidewalk, for the most part in McGinnis Circle, uh, they've been off for a month. So you might wanna turn them on or have some system where they're, come on with a timer, 'cause they have been dead. The bus stop by the fire department, lights aren't on, some people like to be seen at a bus stop. And there are certain other areas in the city that certainly need lights, there are some streets that have no streetlights whatsoever. So if you want input, I'd be happy to give it to you, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Anyone else under public comment? All right, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. I don't know if staff has, uh, any reactions to any of the comments that came in, but, um, the lighting project that was being implemented in the downtown parks and some other locations, might you believe that still is not a hundred percent complete, there's still some other sections to be done?
The, um, not all the lighting's been activated yet, there, um, we require PG&E to make the connection, and apparently they've been backlogged, um, so we're still waiting on them to actually make the connection on it. And the ones in the park are, um, there's a testing period where they test the lights, so they're on continuously during the testing period, and then they'll go to photo cell, so, based on night-day.
Yeah.
Like every, like all the other lights, yeah.
Right, okay, excellent, thank you for that. Okay, we will now go to item eleven, our consent calendar, and we have just one item under consent, and I'll be happy to accept a motion as second unless there's a reason to pull it and to have a discussion.
So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion, since there was no discussion to begin with, probably not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? All right, that passes five-oh, thank you very much. And now we're at item twelve, direction on future agenda items, does anybody, I'll look to my right first, anybody have anything for any future items tonight? Nothing tonight, this way?
Not tonight, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you.
Okay. And we're now at item thirteen, public hearings, and the first item, the only item we have, is consideration of joining the statewide community infrastructure program.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, um, so the statewide community infrastructure program, referred to, because we all love acronyms, is skip, and this is a program under the CSCDA, another fabulous acronym. So CSCDA is the California Statewide Community Development Authority, which the city has been a member of since nineteen ninety-four. It's a joint powers authority across the state of California, and there's three hundred eighty-nine cities as part of this, as well as fifty-six counties. And although the city was a member for, to CSCDA, we had not initiated, um, we had not enrolled, I should say, in the skip program. And enrollment is what we're talking about tonight, it's through, a resolution to enroll the city in the statewide community infrastructure program. This program was started by CSCDA in two thousand and two, and, um, it was really started to allow owners of property in the participating cities or counties, an alternate mechanism to finance projects. And the, um, uh, the projects, I should say that the program is intended for both public infrastructure projects, as well as impact fees, so when you have, for example, a private development, they can finance the, the costs, or part of the cost of the impact fee, or they can finance the cost or part of the cost of some required public improvement they have to do, um, to develop the property. And, um, the, so kind of in a nutshell, um, basically what the CSCDA does to the skip program is, there's applications around the state for, um, for enrolling projects in this program, and, um, people apply, and then the jurisdictions can choose to approve the projects or not approve the projects. And then, assuming they're approved, then they go forward into, um, an aggregated bond program. So, um, a lot of these projects individually are too small to do a bond issuance on, 'cause the bond issuances can be kind of expensive, and they're typically reserved for more expensive projects. So what this program does is it kind of aggregates a bunch of small projects into what then would be a large project, an aggregate, um, to make it worth the bonding costs. And the bonds issued are tax exempt, so, um, a better interest rate than you'd get through many other private funding or financing mechanisms. CSCDA does the bond issuances about two or three times a year, so it's an ongoing process. I, I will say also attached to the staff report is, um, there's a presentation about the skip program, which goes into some more detail. And then, um, like I'd mentioned, attached to the staff report is a resolution, and this is the resolution to enroll the city in the skip program, and, um, that, the skip program is not project-specific, it just is a program that you enroll in, and then it allows projects, um, current projects or future projects to ask to be, to, to enroll in that program and ask, you know, for, to finance their mitigation, um, impact fees, or there are some other infrastructure costs. Attached, um, so anyway, attached to this staff report is a resolution, um, to enroll in the program, and there's also, um, just as a, uh, it's just an FYI resolution, it's a form of the resolution of intention to be adopted by the CSCDA. So it's not a resolution the council adopts, but it's a, it's a resolution the CSCDA adopts, but just so you guys can see the, um, see the language of that resolution, so you're aware of what they're doing, or what they will, what they would do in the future. And then also, there is an acquisition agreement attached as, attached as Exhibit B to the resolution. And, um, the acquisition agreement applies when the private party is doing public infrastructure. It doesn't apply, um, in the case of financing impact fees. So, um, the acquisition agreement, as you see in the action, is, is, um, you would be approving it, approving the form of that agreement. So essentially, when there's an infrastructure project that is bonded through this program, that's the, um, agreement between the city and the developer, um, just with a project name and dates filled in, but that's basically the agreement. So, um, the one thing I will say in terms of pro, city process, the one thing that's a little bit, uh, different, and this is just because this is a bond program, and so it operates like a bond program, it's governed by IRS tax rules, since it's a tax-exempt bond. In, in a, what I call, normal situation, when we do developments, when there's a, um, uh, when there's a building permit issued for someone that, like, say, built a house, for example, there's impact fees that are assessed on the building permit, and so we collect it permit by permit, so, um, uh, the first project that is requesting to be part of this is a, is a project by the name of Kessin Ranch that you're all familiar with. So using that example, it's forty-seven units, so how that would work, um, in the absence of a program like this, is every, every, uh, building permit that's issued as they go along, and it probably would be, would be a two-to-three-year process for them to build out the entire subdivision. Um, we'd collect impact fees locally in our, you know, at the city level, um, with each unit that's issued, each building permit that's issued. With a program like this, because they issue the bonds, then the bonds are issued upfront at the start of the project, and all that, all that bonded impact fee money would be available basically as soon as the bond is issued. So it'd be, so from the city perspective, it would be all available upfront. And, um, what it does mean though is that the bond money is not held by the city. The city has access to it, but it's held in an escrow account, and so when we need the money, we request the funds from the escrow account, as opposed to holding it directly in our, in our account. So it's a little bit of a different process in that respect, but that's a typical bonding process, as opposed to, like, you know, kind of a normal, um, impact fee collection process. The one thing I will also just add is that because of IRS rules around tax-exempt bonds, they, um, they, uh, they want you to make, um, you know, a, a good faith effort to, um, to expend the funds within three years, the, the bond funds, as opposed to, um, what otherwise would be the state law around mitigation fees, which, um, has a little bit of a longer window for expenditure. So, um, just wanna point that out. And, um, I guess with that, I'll just, um, I'll stop there and open it up if you guys have any questions on anything in particular. Thanks.
Okay, great, thank you, are there any questions for staff? Councilmember Harvey?
Um, could you, uh, talk to me a little bit about, um, why the affordable units are excluded? Notice in the discussion in here, it says that those units are excluded. I mean, they still have infrastructure, so I'm a little confused by that.
Yeah, they do, um, so the, the assessment district, so to, to issue the bonds, they have to create an assessment district, um, and the discussion, at least in this particular project, was that, um, the affordable units would be excluded from the assessment district because of the, um, just the financing complexities with affordable, um, affordable housing, and adding, um, you know, shifting the, shifting the cost, you know, the, the cost of the, of these fees from the construction, from the construction front-end cost to a property-based assessment. The, the feeling was is that it would be another property assessment that would be harder to qualify and for people in the lower-income units to manage. So that, what, that, for that reason, they proposed to put it on the market-rate units only and exclude the, the, the low-income ones.
So does that mean that those impact fees will be paid upfront when the permits are issued for those units?
Um, that's correct.
Okay, and my second question is, um, you, you pointed out, uh, one of the, the things for developers is that it allows a better rate, because, um, typically the bonds are lower than what a resident would get on a mortgage rate. So my question is, is most people going out buying, buying a home, you know, sort of have a general expectation, at least in California, that their tax rate's gonna be, you know, one percent, and then any, any additions. But generally speaking, this is a big add-on when you look at the examples that were in there. So how are people that are looking to purchase these houses, how are they really kind of informed upfront so that they know before they all of a sudden get this huge tax bill that they weren't anticipating?
Right, so, um, I should also point out, I forgot to mention in my staff report, that we do, um, just as a housekeeping thing, we do have, um, a representative from the skip program here tonight, Luke Brewer, who is available to answer any more detailed questions, but, um, and he can, maybe you can come up and help me on this one. But my understanding is, is in the, um, is in the purchase documents that the property owner receives, that it discloses all of these things in the title report as well?
That's a little late.
So when they're, when they're marketing the homes generally, they have to, uh, include it in any, any sort of, like, papers they give to them with respect to the, the pricing of the home, it has to basically refer to any additional taxes beyond the one percent, and beyond the, the taxes of the school district, et cetera, any ad hoc taxes.
So those are a requirement that those, um...
That's a statewide requirement, that those are disclosed.
Disclosed.
Yeah, very blatantly, yeah, so Melo Rus has a, is very popular down in Riverside and this southern California, it's not as popular up north, they had a very, they had a big problem with that, and so they, they put laws in place that were for homebuyers to really understand what they were getting themselves into.
Okay.
So, and we've, we've done some interesting analyses that show, were they to pass the, um, costs of these impact fees onto the homebuyers in the price of the home rather than in an assessment, it can be more beneficial in some situations to have it passed on as an assessment, because there's no upfront, you have to put down the down payment, sort of, on a house that's a little bit cheaper, and it can make homes more affordable from a sort of upfront standpoint.
Thank you for that, those weren't my questions.
All right, Councilmember Moore, any questions for staff?
Thank you, Mayor Deloso, I do have a couple of questions. The, there's nothing to preclude the homeowner from prepaying or paying these assessments off early, if they so desire, is there?
Nope, yeah, they can, they can call bonds anytime, so if they were, a homebuyer was to buy the home, you know, right after they finished building it, and if they wanted to include in their mortgage the amount to, to pay it off, they could do that themselves. And they can pay it off anytime, there's a small premium in the first ten years, but after that, it's, um, totally able to be repaid. So two percent premium for the first ten years.
To pay it off early?
Declining down to one and then a hundred percent.
So there is a fee if they pay it early, because then the bonds don't necessarily hit maturity or...
Correct.
Okay. And then the other question I had was on the, uh, impact fees. With the normal impact fees, what is the time period that we have to expend those?
Yeah, it's ten years.
And now we're going to a three-year window that we have to expend those?
Um, we have to...
On these particular projects?
Um, so it's, it's my understanding it's a good faith effort, but I think, you know, the bulk of it is, um, projects, based on the window of time they give you to expend these funds. We already have, um, for the bulk of the impact fees in this particular case, we have, um, projects already...
We earmark those already?
Yeah.
And technically, from sixty days prior to the application, any money that has been spent by the city out of funds for those impact fees can be counted against the money that is bonded for. So you can lo, look back, doesn't have to be from the day that the, that we closed the bonds and the funds are, are made available, it can be sixty days, so the, the application was received in September, so they can look back as far as, you know, May, June, July, to look at expenditures the city has made, in addition to projects that are earmarked.
So for, I mean, for example, we have, um, the bulk of the impact fees in this case are sewer impact fees, largest dollar amount of them, and, um, we have the P-one sewer under construction right now, and that's, like, eligible, right, as a, as a project that we could pay ourselves partially back for?
Uh, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I'll look this way, Councilmember Landman, any questions?
One question, thank you. Mr. Brewer, um, so I'm looking at page two of my packet here, you don't need to all look at it, but it's just basically talking about some of the advantages clearly for the developer, the current property owner, and that's logical, we can see that, but that's helpful. And it mentions for homebuyers, that paying for the cost of public infrastructure through a special assessment is superior, then having those costs rolled into the cost of their home, 'cause ultimately, this is a cost that's passed on to the people that purchase these homes, uh, one way or the other, whether it's upfront or it's through, through bonding. But it mentions the last, uh, sentences, moreover... But it mentions the last sentences, moreover, because the special assignment financing is that taxes have rates, it typically comes to lower costs than mortgage rates. I'm assessing, I'm guessing the answer to my question's going to be very small, but in a small development like this, where we're going to have maybe 42, 43 units that will be covered under this, what sort of cost savings might we expect to be found from this? Can you take even a rough guess at that, Mr. Brewer?
From an interest rate perspective?
Right, talking about the savings, since these are tax exempted, typically should come, the financing should come at a slightly lower cost than mortgage rates, and I'm curious if there's some built, baked in savings here, if we can put a rough idea what it is. I'm imagining it's pretty negligible, but I wanted to hear somebody who knew more tell me that.
So it's a little bit tricky because a part of the savings are actually, so when developers get loans, they're relatively expensive. They're raw land loans, you know, they're construction loans, they're really probably in the 8% range, and then obviously mortgages are much lower because they're backed by an actual asset, they have a security, and so developers generally have to borrow money in the beginning of projects, and especially in small projects, have to borrow money just to pay these fees when they pull them, because they can't sell a home and get the profit from that until after they've paid the fees. So you're, they take, you know, however much time their loan is on that, those fees, and they put that interest on the home as well. That's the beginning aspect of it. And then from there, you have, I mean, our rates have been between 4% and four and three quarters over the, you know, time of the year and depending on where the markets currently are. And so we've seen, mortgage rates have also been extremely low for the past, you know, eight, nine years now.
Don't say that out loud, you'll jinx it.
Yeah, I know. But yeah, we generally see, and we've done different analyses, and, you know, we can sort of circle back and provide you with some one of those side by sides, and the developer's consultant is generally puts those together for the developer so that they can sort of work on that when they're doing the marketing, so they can sort of point to that. And it's, a lot of the times, it's negligible, it's, you know, $100 a year or so, but it adds up, and especially when you're talking about.
Well, I just wanted to check, obviously, if it's something, it's almost, obviously, it's in the green side of the slate, I like that better for the public than going the other direction, that would be pretty unacceptable. But I was just curious, if it was large, I was going to ask you, what's the methodology to make sure that this small savings is truly passed on to the consumer? Because, I mean, are you counting on just the marketplace to do that?
So when we issue the bonds, we generally tend to issue them at a premium, which is a positive because it means that, so the interest rate is higher, but the actual amount borrowed is lower sometimes in certain situations, and so if they get of the actual principal amount of the assessment is much lower than it would be if market rates were higher. So that's an aspect of tax exempt financing, the taxable financing doesn't have. So we issue 5% coupon bonds at a 4% rate. And so there's, the bondholders will buy at a much higher price, so it lowers the total amount we need to borrow. And so that's sort of one of the ways that it's passed on, the actual assessment amount annually, it would be lower than would it be if it would have been, you know-
I was looking to refer what's the mechanism that actually would slightly wind down to a small degree that market price for the finished unit, because that's obviously, that's where this is set. You would guess that the marketplace, given that the developers save some money, they can be slightly more competitive or perhaps shaving a bit off, and I just wanted to see if there's anything beyond that in there to protect the consumer.
So when land, California has a, the real issue isn't, there are, there's construction costs, but land value, the cost of land has gone up a lot, and so a lot of developers don't want to build, or if they do build, they want to build, you know, the biggest, fanciest homes because it's where that's the way they can make the most money. And so I think what consumers get with these kinds of programs is, is it helps home builders keep the costs of homes where they are while land values are going up dramatically, because it means that they don't have to raise the price of the home to sort of fall out in the same place. So that's the mechanism, and that obviously sounds like it's on the developer's side, but it ends up also being on the home buyer's side because they don't have to pay more for the home just because the land that's underneath it has gone up significantly in value.
So basically, it just helps the chances or the opportunity for working class housing to be available that might fall under the penciling out range. Very good. Thank you for that answer.
All right, thank you, Councilmember, and Vice Mayor Skilman, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. I don't, I think this has been answered by our city manager, but I'm going to ask it again. So when you were talking about the spending of the bonded impact fees, and you said there's about a three-year, you use that term good faith effort, which to me, from a legal standpoint, I don't know what that means, and how do you interpret that? So I'm curious, within that same definition, is it if the money is obligated or if the money is expended, and if they're looking at a difference, because those are two radically different things. You can obligate, you know, in the form of an agreement or a contract or a purchase request, but you still haven't expended the dollars. So to me, that's kind of, that's kind of a good faith effort, but I'm not sure, and if that wasn't, you know, I couldn't find that definition anywhere in there.
And I have to say this directly, because we've just, we're just dealing with this with another, another city, they were just asking the same question, is what do I have to certify to? And it's not really a very strong certification that we require, so at the, every closing, there's a tax certificate that is signed by the city for any funds in it, and it says that they reasonably expect, it's not a good, it's not good faith, it's reasonably expect to spend the money in three years. And what we believe, and then there's another sentence that says, and have done the due diligence behind that, that says they can reasonably expect three years. So a lot of the times for cities, that just means capital improvement plans. Let's say we have these projects laid out that are sewer, or these that are water, or streets, or lighting, or whatever we're funding, and it says that they reasonably expect, based on those plans, to spend that money at that time. And then the other aspect of the due diligence is we do the due diligence with the city at the time of financing. We ask every single time, do you have projects? And if you don't, we don't fund it. That's the way that it goes. We're not, we don't force the funding on people, we really only finance what we can do tax exempt, that's, that's the way the program works.
Okay, that just makes it a little bit more solid, and that's kind of what I was curious about, so I'm satisfied with that response, unless you have anything to add?
I was just going to reiterate that it's obviously important that we have an adopted and current, you know, capital improvement program, which you know, you know, we're in the process of updating it right now, so it's important that we have a, you know, a current capital improvement program to be able to make that certification of reasonable expectation of expenditure.
Okay. No, that's great. All right, well, thank you, we may have you come back up. I'm going to go ahead and open this up for a public comment at this point in time, if anybody has any comments related to this topic? Nobody. All right then, I will close the public comment and bring this back to council for some direction.
If there's no further comment, I'd be happy to move adoption of the attached resolution authorizing the city participate in the statewide community infrastructure program, skip, and approving the form of the acquisition agreement attached to the resolution as exhibit B.
Second?
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, sure, that's a 5-0 vote in favor, thank you very much. We will now move to item 14 of our regular agenda, which is the measure G, annual report for fiscal year 2017 and 2018. I'll turn that over to the city manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So in, well, of course, the item before you is the measure G annual report for fiscal year 1718, as well as the review letter by the measure G citizens oversight committee, which met on December 13th of last year, and is attached to the packet. So just sort of in summary, the annual report on measure G for the prior fiscal year, it continues to support essential services, police, parks, streets, and recreation services. Some highlights from last year include, as you know, our consolidation or absorption, I would say, of SSU's dispatch, so we're the primary public safety answering point for Sonoma State University as well, which is an opportunity that would not have presented itself had measure G not been in existence, and we're able to preserve our local police department. We also added a second recreation staff person as a rec coordinator. We, we continue to work on the citywide lighting project, and we started the start of construction there, but most of the construction spilled into this current fiscal year we're in now. And we did construct the cater sidewalk projects, so it allowed us to acquire the CDBG grant to do the sidewalk here, which was the sidewalk gap on East School Street. It's the, it was the sidewalk gap that was remaining, and so now we have continuous sidewalk all the way down East School to the civic center area, and leveraged that CDBG money. We completed the remodel of the engineering and community development space for better workflow and customer service during this fiscal year. We continued the ongoing vehicle replacement for, recycled out an old administrative vehicle and police patrol car. And the focus, aside from the capital projects already mentioned, was, was winding down the large grant-driven projects from the prior fiscal years. This is like the downtown paving project, as well as the sidewalks and crosswalks and streetlights and trees that you see in the northern gateway area. So we're winding down those large grant-driven projects and moving into the next phase of work, which, which was completing design for the L-section paving that went into construction shortly after the end of the fiscal year, which you all saw, as well as East Catati paving project, which is another federal grant-driven project with measure G matching funds. And so that one, I mean, that's in the adopted budget, but that project physically is located east of the railroad tracks, so basically the railroad tracks to the city limits in front of Sunflower Park and Wyndham Farms. And so you should be seeing that move into construction, hopefully, in the near future. And finally, finishing up the West School Street sidewalk, the phase of work, just continuing the off-street sidewalk for, for children to be able to walk on the west side to Thomas Page School. And I'll just wrap up by saying that, as you all know, measure G allows for 100% of this revenue to stay local, unlike the other sources of revenue that the city has, and it allows for all of these programs and infrastructure improvements that not only we've seen this year, but in prior years and in the current year. So the, as I mentioned earlier, the letter from the oversight committee is attached, and they found the expenditure is consistent with measure G, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Good report, I mean, it shows the, at least conceptually, what we had discussed way back when, how those dollars could be spent, that's where, exactly where those funds are going, so that's very promising. Any questions for staff? Councilmember Moore?
No, I think it's great. You were talking about the West School Street sidewalk improvement for the children, I guess seniors could use that as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
That was a clarification, oh, thank you, all right. Councilmember Harvey, any? No? Vice Mayor Skilman, any questions?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Landman? No? Okay. I'm going to open this up for a public comment. Ms. Alderman, please.
During the celebration for the mayor, I was joking with a lot of people around here that I'm the real history historian in Catati, who may be the whatever, the official one, but I know what really happens. Measure G report was a joke. This is what happens every year. You publish it three days before, sometimes up to 24 hours, but 24 hours to 72 hours before. You don't advertise it anywhere, nobody shows up other than the citizens that are appointed. You chose your citizens, you appoint people that you only know will do it. Then Damian sits there for 45, 50 minutes giving a report on what it is. Then they don't discuss it. Then they approve the letter. It has no, oversight of measure G is a joke. You want to know, it could be, those funds can be used for, you can say you use them for toilet paper. It's a general tax. You want to know where the money really went? The bump from measure A to measure G was a half a cent. It brings an extra million dollars a month, a year. What has the salaries gone up according to Transparent California in the last three years? It's gone up a million dollars. That's where measure G money is going. It's going in the staff's pockets and for their pensions. You don't mention any time that Damian's getting huge amounts of money, you never curtail the city, and you make measure G responsible for everything. It is not. You have not kept up with the ballot measure when people, you don't have citizens in the audience discussing it because you hide the damn when the meeting is. It could, I mean, you have mosquito abatement openings, but you can't put the citizens, what we pay a half cent more sales tax a year? You can't put that on the headlines? I am just really disgusted at, this has been going on for four years. I was the only one who went to one of these, to my knowledge. I'm the only citizen. So you guys really need to tell the truth and keep this, stop this crap.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else on this item? I've seen no one, I'll go ahead and close the public comment. We will see certainly what we can do in better outreach efforts, and I know, speaking of your comment of money in staff's pockets, you know, we did say early on that we would increase our police department and our maintenance persons, maintenance division, and I do know through measure G, we've hired two officers, we've hired a dispatch person, and an additional, at least one additional maintenance employee. So with that, let me go back here, I believe this was a receive and file?
Mm-hmm.
And we have received and filed. Unless there's any further comments or questions from councilmembers?
I did want to thank staff for the thoughtfulness and thoroughness of the report, you know? It is true, measure G doesn't do every single thing, but it is also true, it does a lot, and it's very clear in reading and support exactly what it does. And I think, frankly, that's exactly the type of thing you want to give to a committee that meets, you know, on an annual basis, that's exactly what they needed. In terms of my friends on there, I would mention, I'm actually going to have to ask, James O'Rourke is my appointment, correct? I've never met the man. I remember when it came up, there were a few different names, I looked at backgrounds, and that's who I picked, so, and it looks like, from what I've seen, they're doing good work. So my thanks to them too for taking the time and commitment to actually be helpful in running the city. That's a great thing, we appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Harvey?
Yeah, I appreciate you mentioning the fact that with measure G, we were able to add police officers and maintenance workers, we got a recreation department back. I think it's also important to acknowledge and remind people, it's in the report, but we need to remind folks that we came from a place where we had a 28% reduction in staff, and we've been able to bring, you know, bring those numbers back. We had reduced services, we had, you know, the offices closed all the time, we were barely, you know, getting by. We had voluntary staff salary reductions of 14%. I mean, those were temporary reductions that we would have had to ultimately probably reduce staff even more to cover those. So it's one thing to look at, you know, bottom line numbers and say, the salaries have gone up by a million dollars. Well, in fact, salaries are people, and people are salaries, so of course, the salary numbers will go up if you add people. So it's, it's all relative, we have added folks, and we have, you know, brought back the services. So I think measure G, the people of the community decided that they wanted these services and they wanted to keep these services, so I think that the money is being well-spent, kept in our community.
All right, thank you very much for those comments, appreciate it. We're going to now move to item 15, which is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So I'll start off, since we're just talking about police, I'll start off with, for this new year, we just, we have a new, we had a shift change in the police department, so this week is a new shift where they all, they all take new time slots. And we started our new traffic officer, Officer Ranky-
And we started our new traffic officer, Officer Ranky, he's our new traffic officer. And he is starting in the patrol car during the winter, and we're gonna get him into some motorcycle school here shortly. So hopefully, he will be on the motorcycle soon. But, so he's out there now, and rain or shine? Yes. Yeah, yeah. I didn't mean to imply that he's in the car because it's winter time. It's just, he needs traffic, he needs the motor school to be able to ride the motorcycle. That was what that is. So he's gonna be out there this week and from here on out, keeping our streets safer, so that's a good thing. And our canine officer, Officer Deaton, is now a corporal, and he's still patrolling with Remo, his canine dog. So if you see him out there, you might have a couple stripes on his sleeve that he didn't have before. So you can tell him congratulations if you happen to see him. And here's a, this is a first for the Catati Police Department. One of our officers is Officer Wardell. And I don't know if any of you have looked at the police department's Facebook page, but they had a mustache contest at the end of the year. And so there's one of them, Officer Wardell's one of them. I got a lot of likes on his mustache. He has a kind of strawberry-colored mustache, he's blond, strawberry blonde, right? So he's continuing to, continuing to grow that out. Well, that officer is our first-ever recruit training officer at the Santa Rosa J.C. Police Academy. So he is representing Catati well up there and helping to train the next crop of police officers for this county. So that was, it's very impressive. And he's also the officer, by the way, the last year, that won the MAT Award for DUI stops and getting people off the road that are driving intoxicated. So he's doing a lot of great work. And then, just to catch up on some stuff from the holiday, we had our successful toy drive and delivery that we do with the Rotary Club, as well as Ranch Adobe Fire. And on December 22nd, we were delivering toys in the patrol cars and fire trucks to families in Catati, Runer Park, and Peng Grove. So another, this is a continuation of that annual event, and a lot of lucky kids got presents that day. And then at, we had a couple cocoa, so you know we have coffee with a cop, right? But not everyone is suited for caffeine, especially people that are young, like, especially like my children. Caffeine's not a good idea. So we also have a program for them that we started in this wintertime. We had cocoa with a cop, and we were out there at Thomas Page Academy and met children. We have a bunch of programs out there where we're meeting with the police and the teachers and the principal and running various things. But this particular thing was kind of a meet-and-greet, kinda like the coffee with a cop, but with kids. And we also had cocoa with Santa, next station, next door at the police station. The day before, we had our breakfast with Santa event. And the Santa mysteriously resembled one of our police sergeants, who read "Cops Christmas" to the kids. So it might not have been the real Santa. Anyway, it was, it was, that was another fun event. And then finally, at Thomas Page Academy, we delivered shoes for all the children there in partnership with New Hope Church on East Catati Avenue. They had gotten a grant through a shoe company, and they had asked our assistance on that, so our police department partnered with them and did all the measuring of all their feet earlier in the November, I think is when it was, or maybe early December. And then they delivered shoes to everyone right before Christmas there. So that was great. On construction updates, night work is continuing on the sewer main on Highway 116, and it's currently, as you see by the plating and the highway out there, that's between the northbound off-ramp and Orbit Highway at this time. And it's currently expected this will be complete in February, weather permitting. When it rains, they don't do any work, so. It's gonna be, with the forecasted weather in the next week or so, it's gonna be kinda slow out there, but they continue when they can to do the night work, just to stay out of people's way during the daytime when it's busy. And then the lighting project, as we already talked about that, but we're continuing to wait on P G N E to activate some other lights, and hopefully, that'll wrap up soon. And then on the recreation front, on Saturday, December 13th, we hosted our third sold-out Breakfast with Santa event. And guests had a great time visiting Santa, having a pancake breakfast and making crafts in a full, in a fully decorated gingerbread house classroom. We had a classroom that was all decked out like a gingerbread house, it was pretty cool. And the two, we had two sessions, we had two breakfast sessions, and we had 193 registered participants. And that doesn't include children, who don't count as registered participants, like under the two-year-olds and lower. So we had a lot of babies, too. It was, it was very busy. It was super fun, and it's actually one of the, one of my daughter's favorite events. She likes to hand out cocoa to kids and make it extra chocolatey, I think, I don't know. So we expect that to continue and evolve next year, and we're working on that. During the past two weeks, while schools were on break, this is after Christmas, New Year's timeframe, where people have to go back to work because Christmas is over, and, but their kids' school isn't back in session yet, we hosted a Camp Catati Winter Break Camp, and we had 17 participants in the first week and 26 in the second week. And the campers got to spend time making, making friends, creating crafts, and playing outside. And we spent one day at La Plaza Park and another at Veranda Fletti, where the campers got to learn about the animals on the property. Thank you, Dustin. And visit a seven-day-old baby sheep and play games. It was a great two weeks of camp, and we look forward to hosting again during the spring break camp in March. And I will just, I've said this before, but also, I'll just say it again, the Redwood Empire Food Bank is offering senior food basket at the Charles Street Village property on Charles Street, of course, to anyone 60 and up on the second Wednesday of each month from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m., so that, that means the next one's tomorrow morning. And you don't need to be a resident of Charles Street Village to receive food, you just need an ID to verify your age. And then on Saturday, February 16th, we'll be having our second annual Sweethearts Fairy Tale Dance for parents and their little princesses and princes. Children and families will enjoy a fancy evening of dancing, crafts, and refreshments. And so all these things, you can register for on the website or over the phone, or you can just call Ashley Wilson at 665-4222, or awilson@catatiscity.org for information or questions. And of course, follow the city's Facebook page for announcements on events and that sort of thing. And then, last but not least, after what seemed to be an exceedingly long report, so I apologize for that, but I did wanna mention that I'm sad to say that Vicki will be departing from us, she'll be departing the city. And I just wanted to thank her personally for her level of professionalism and dedication that she's brought to the Community Development Department. And I will say, you know, having worked with her on a day-to-day basis, that she is a tireless advocate for the community's vision of Catati. And, you know, I think it's a pretty regular occurrence, especially in community development, where someone has some fabulous idea that would be totally contrary to what the community would want. And Vicki has been the gatekeeper to, to make sure that the projects that, that fit for the community, you know, that meet the general plan, the specific plan, are, are, you know, that they're, that they're brought through the process in an efficient and professional way. And then, you know, and the ones that have maybe different ideas are explained, you know, sometimes numerous times, as to how they can modify things to, you know, working with them to try to make it, you know, fit the community's vision. And anyway, I just, I just, I guess I'll conclude by saying that I'll miss her, I'll miss her greatly, but I wish her the best of luck in her, in her future endeavors. Anyway, thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are we allowed to say something to make her cry? I'm just curious.
Absolutely.
Yes. Oh, good. So any councilmembers, I'll start with Councilmember Landman, any comments?
Well, I don't know if I'm gonna try to make you cry, but I do wanna kind of tag on to what Damian said, you know? Walking this year, got to talk to a lot of people that have lived here a long time, and a lot of people have just moved here. And one of the uniform things I heard is how much they like the town. They like the unique little neighborhoods, the way they're laid out, the porches, everything about that. And you've essentially been the guide and the leading light to make sure that happens. Not always an easy job, sometimes, saying no to people, interests that don't wanna be said no to, but the proof is in the result. And I think you've been a huge success here for us, because Catati is doing very well. It looks very well. It's a very desirable place to live, and that's largely a result of the work you've put in here. So we're very grateful for that. I will say that, working with you, I've found you've always displayed a very deep knowledge, sound judgment, personally, a willingness to go the extra mile for constituents, even just recently, when somebody in L-section needed some help with an issue. You went beyond what we had, you worked to find a new way to help that neighborhood with something that had been a thorn on their side for years, and you made that progress. We were just walking out there the other day and saw comparatively huge improvement. There may be room to go, but, but that was all you. And I remember how pleased I was to have, working with somebody that was that great to work with and do something like that. And personally, I will miss you very much. I will miss your, you may not see this at council meetings, but I do regularly, your absolutely effervescent sense of humor. And the one thing, I'll probably be safer at council meetings, because as we discussed earlier, we're the only, I cannot look you in the eyes during a meeting and vice versa, because we'll both start laughing and get in trouble. So I will miss having to be careful of that. I'm so happy we have a place that lets people develop, shine, and move on to do even bigger and better things, and I wish you success in doing that. And thank you for your time with us, Vicki.
Wow, that's like, that was really good. I know, do you wanna, do you wanna follow that?
I don't wanna follow, okay.
Really?
I'll try. No, I will definitely miss seeing you at council meetings and then the halls and talking with you and getting updates about the horses, the furry, the furry children. And I cannot, because I'm having a senior moment at my youthful age, I can't remember if I brought this up the last meeting, but I got a note end of November that I got from somebody who, they now live in Alaska, but they came back to visit with his wife, and he commented, and I'll share this with you, because I know that you're a big part of this, but also with my fellow councilmembers, they said that they were so pleased to see the old school still being put to use and all the new businesses that were here in town. And they said that, you know, even though they live far away, Catati has been and will always be my home, thank you for sustaining such a vibrant community, and we look forward to visiting again. So even folks who no longer live here can come back and appreciate that we still maintain that small-town charm that so many people find to be their number-one priority. And just wanted to share that note with you, because I think you've been a large part of that during your tenure here with Catati, and I wish you good luck with your future endeavors.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor? Councilmember Moore, any words?
Certainly. I haven't even said anything yet, you're like... I think you've been a tremendous asset to the community, coming in at a time when it was not easy, with the economic downturn and recession that we experienced, and have stayed true to the vision of the general plan and the specific plans, as Mark has indicated. You've always carried the task with great integrity and with a good sense of humor, and realizing that you have to have a thick skin in a position like you're at, especially dealing with people like councilmembers like us. And I think you've done admirably, and I, and I think that our loss is gonna be your future's gain. So thank you so much for serving.
Councilmember Harvey?
Vicki, Vicki, Vicki. Well, I, too, will miss you. As was alluded to in Damian and Mark's comments, you really did grasp what the community wanted. I can remember all of the sessions around the general plan update. I mean, some of those were pretty crazy, and you listened to what people had to say, and you developed a plan to implement those ideas and thoughts. Speaking of crazy councilmembers, I more than once had, have brought in something someone wanted to do, or something someone needed, or something I'd seen, and you always found a way to either set me straight or to help make, make the situation different. I agree, you have a great sense of humor and are very professional with what you do. You opened the Catati Open for Business program. We didn't have that, a lot of people appreciated that. You visited businesses to see what you could help with the businesses. And I agree with Councilmember Moore that your success in your new endeavor is really our loss and their asset. And I will miss you, miss, you know, occasionally getting together with you at different events and learning about your horses and, and other things. But I hope you'll come back and visit us, and I hope to see you around town. But good luck, and we will definitely miss you.
Oh, my turn? I haven't, oh, no, I can, I can make her cry if I really wanted to. Actually, Councilmember Harvey kinda stole my thunder, because I, too, was gonna say, Vicki, Vicki, Vicki. So I'm gonna put that sentence past me now and move on to my other thoughts. And it really, I mean, it really is your professionalism that you brought, not just to City Hall, but certainly to the Community Development Department. And it's gotta be a really tough thing when a developer or somebody comes in with, you know, a really interesting-sounding idea, but that idea really doesn't go with either the policy or direction that's been set by current or past councils. And so that's gotta be a really difficult thing, and, and I know we've talked about that in the past, but, you know, you've had a very strong hand in developing what this city looks like now and what it's going to look like in the future. So as people have said, you know, don't, don't forget to come back and look at your handiwork, because sometimes it does take time for things like that to develop out. So yes, we will all miss you, we wish you the best of luck. And if there's still some more cookies, you're welcome to have a cookie if you'd like, so. And I'm not gonna, I'm not putting you on the spot, since this was the City Manager's Report, to say anything. So we will just thank you, and we'll move on for now. All right.
I would just...
There's more, I knew it. I knew I couldn't get her.
I couldn't, my mom would, would be horrified if I didn't say thank you for all those kind words, so I do wanna say thank you to that. And I am gonna cry, and I apologize for that lack of professionalism, but it really has been a privilege to serve you all in the planning commission and the design review, and especially this group here that we work so hard together every day. It's been my privilege to do that, thank you.
Thank you again. The pressure's now on Damian. Sorry. All right, item 17 is, no, item 16, I almost skipped over that, sorry. City Council member reports. Let's go to my right, we'll start with Councilmember Moore.
I don't know if I like this seat over here.
It moves around, it's all right.
The, in looking at the departure of our Community Development Director and the relationship that she had with the, with the Chamber Commerce, I just referenced that tonight at our meeting, and we had the big gasp of, oh, no! And so they were sad to see you go because of the relationship and the outreach that you had done with the chamber and through the city. So they're gonna miss you greatly as well. I'm sure they may come by and say something prior to your leaving. Other than that, there was a couple of things that were coming up with the Chamber Commerce. On the 18th, we've got the Farmsters' Grand opening, and that'll be coordinated there. And of course, we have the Awards Dinner, the annual Awards Dinner coming up on, on February 2nd. And then there's some luncheon meeting that I think might be of all of us on February 12th, here in the Community Room. And the speaker's gonna be Chester Santos, and he gives information and guidelines on memory. And I thought, oh, we can all use that. So those are a couple of, few things that are coming up with the Chamber Commerce, and they've got their newborn, they're looking for new board members this year. And so they had a couple of people that were participating in the meeting. I won't go into whether or not they wanna be divulged yet, because they haven't determined if they wanna accept a position in the board, but I think they would be, both be a terrific asset to the board. And then we have our REMAP Annual Two-Day And then we have our REMAP Annual Two-Day Meeting coming up in Windsor on the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth. Yeah, so we'll begin with that. Other than that, I think I did participate with Mayor Delasso on the California Homemakers' Food Drive, which I think went very well. And that's my reports.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Harvey.
Okay, the only thing that I have to report on is December nineteenth was the Sonoma County Waste Management Agency meeting. And the only couple highlights that I'd like to give you is, the first thing is, they are getting very close to having updated polystyrene model ordinance language, so at some point, they will be circling back with you, City Manager, to get that moving. And then the other thing was, we had to do a Second Amendment to the e-waste handling agreement. The vendor that was doing it went out of business, as one might imagine. It's hard to get rid of e-waste and things, so I won't go into all of those details. The one sad thing that came out of all of this is that the new vendor will not be accepting items like vacuums and fans and small appliances that they call household scrap because there's basically nothing that they can do with it at this point. So they'll be looking to see what else they can do about that, but that's a sad thing because it does mean that those things, until we find another solution, will be landfilled, which is not a direction that we want to move in. Anyways, as we all know, things change, but that is all I have to report on.
You know, if I could add to that, too, you know, at work, we try to have 100% waste-free events, and we do barbecues where we thank all of the volunteers, a number of the volunteers in the park. There's usually about 400 people that come. And we have had past events with zero waste. We've had compostable plates and/or utensils where we ask people to bring their own, the same with the cups, and then the food scraps get, you know, recycled. It's just, it's a pretty intense effort, but it works really well. And now we're finding that a lot of the compostable items, that people aren't taking those anymore that used to take them and do whatever magic they did with them. And that's really, it's getting to be harder and harder. So, you know, I'm wondering how the county is kind of looking at that issue.
The problem with a lot of that stuff is that it says compostable on it, but it's all relative in time. So it will eventually compost, but the problem is, is having a product and creating a product and having that amount of time. So that's sort of the kind of downside to that, is eventually it will compost, but not in a reasonable amount of time. So products will get better, they're, you know, coming up with different products, and I think over time it'll get better. But that's kind of one of those drawbacks, drawbacks to that. But I have faith that things will change.
I hope so, yeah. That would be a good thing. All right, Councilmember Landman.
Nothing to report tonight.
Excellent report out, thank you very much. Vice Mayor Skilman.
I was gone for a good chunk of time between our last meeting and this one, but I did attend a new mayor's reception. It was sort of an informal gathering, so I met several people who have been appointed mayor for this year. And the mayor of Windsor created sashes, so if you have missed out on getting your sash, I do know who to contact for that. But anyway, that's all I have to report out.
Are these Quinby-style sashes?
They're red, white, and blue.
Mayor Quinby?
Yes.
It's lovely. I, yeah, I'll definitely get back to you on that one. All right, just a couple of items from me. We had our Ag and Open Space meeting back in mid-December. That was a meeting where an issue had been brought to the Mayors and Council Members' Executive Committee of a member from the Mayors and Council Members who's on Ag and Open Space who had volunteered to then get on a subcommittee for the Matching Grant Program cycle, which is every other year. And then that individual was told, "You can't participate because your city has an application in there." And so then the question came, "Well, I mean, why can't I just sort of, like we would do at our council meetings, recuse myself when that issue comes up, but still be involved with..." Since, you know, you had to read a volume of information, so it became a very hairy topic. It went to the Board of Supervisors. They weighed in. So we brought this to our last meeting, and as chair, my words of wisdom were that, and I wrote it down so I could read it right that night, that we have an opportunity to look at an issue and see what, if any, changes we might recommend to the board, which is the Board of Supervisors, and to have a productive conversation. I literally went around the room, person by person, from every committee member, including our two youth members. We have a young man and a young woman. And they probably had just the most relevant comments out of everybody that was there because there's people that represent environmental groups, realtors, bless you. And so it's kind of this broad group, and there's three appointees that come from mayors and council members. So it was a great discussion. I didn't want any final action taken that night. I just wanted the discussion to take place and then to sit on that process for a month till we meet again, which is out in a couple of weeks, we're going to meet again. And we still may not have a resolution at that time. I mean, it's a program that's every other year. We've got a little bit of time, and it's not like we have to have a decision right away. But I thought, so in lieu of appointing the subcommittee for the Matching Grant Program and the cycle to appoint subcommittees in our bylaws is in January, so I said, "In lieu of doing that, why don't we wait until that cycle comes up, see what proposals come in from the different jurisdictions? Then you can appoint a subcommittee or have people volunteer. And if there's a Katahdadi project, I would simply say, 'I'm out of the process.' That's fine." That was me. It's okay, sorry. I really, you know, being an Italian and having a microphone, it's just a curse. All right, so that was that. The discussion will continue, and we'll see where it goes. On the twenty-second, Councilmember Moore mentioned the food drive that we had over here. This was now the fifth or sixth annual food drive. We put food boxes together for about 125 needy families, and it's just, it's a great event. It's amazing how organized California Homemakers Association is and how effective they are in getting donated food from, you know, several dozen frozen turkeys and frozen hams, canned goods, fresh vegetables and fruits, and so on. So it's a great event, and I cleaned up and I was out of there by 2:30. That was awesome. That was a world's record for me. And also, several of us took part in a lighting ceremony on Gravenstein Way where we judged Christmas lights in that neighborhood. And it was during a lovely rainstorm, so our papers were, you know, by the time we got back in to look at our numbers, the papers were all like this, and you couldn't even read the numbers we did. But we had a great time. Several family members came out and greeted us, and one woman did bribe us with brownies. I'm not sure that they won. I can't remember if I recall. They did? They did.
Extra points.
I guess that wasn't so good, yeah. So, sorry about that one. But anyway, that was a fun event, and they really did a great job in their neighborhood. I'm sure their electric bills are going to be through the roof, but that's their issue. Okay, I have, lost my agenda, there it is. Now we will move on to public comment on non-action agenda items. Item seventeen, Ms. Alderman.
Okay, on future agenda items, I think you need to have an item on citizens' participation and what is really happening. Tonight, there is Eric Kirchman and I are the only real citizens for the last, in the audience. There's also Dustin Mateo, who's the farm, with the farm, and then there's the guy from the, on the plan, I don't know what. But this has gone on for a lot. You guys are not, it's your show. This, and you take down anybody, any citizens who try to speak. You did it again tonight with me. You need to knock this off and put this on an agenda item to get people in and to respect their opinions and allow them, without tearing them down every freaking time. Okay. The other are on the city manager's report. Damian always uses this Recreation Department as a public half of his report. There, it's not his successes, it's Ashley Wilson's successes. On a little bit of budget, she's done wonders. I have nothing but, you guys spend less than 1% of the city budget on recreation. Most cities with senior and, in California, the average is 15% for senior services and recreation problems. You have no senior services. You have, the recreation classes for adults are contract classes and cost like $12 a class. There's not, there's, it's all this emphasis on the children, and you've skipped out a whole lot of other people. You're affecting people's lives by your actions, and you act like it doesn't matter. Teenagers have nothing, hardly anything here. You, how long, how many years have you planned done that? Put the things on the agenda. Make a difference. Don't just be up here and put on a show every week, every other week, because that's what it's getting to be. So anyway, that's about it. And I've got to say this because Vicky is another one that called me psycho over three years ago. I am tired of being called psycho. I am not psycho. I am very together, and this has been used against me way too long. You guys need to really stop. I am very honest, very intelligent, and definitely not psycho, and stop using it against me.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kirchman.
Yes, I would ask you, when Ms. Walton returns at the next meeting, that you ask her her opinion, and perhaps if she's gotten one from her colleagues, on the fact that she is at Sonoma State University at the Salazar Building. And having spent three years prior to the Tech High ever coming into being, I researched other technology institutions, and it was determined that being at Sonoma State, or at least close to Sonoma State, makes a great deal of sense. I would also ask that you, when and if you meet with the school board, that you too suggest, depending upon what Ms. Walton has to say, that they house the Tech High School either on the eastern portion of Rancho Katahdadi or somewhere other than miles from the university in a small abandoned building. To have the Tech High in a building because it's convenient is not at all what I learned in three years of preparation. It's not the way the Tech High School is operated. It is very important that it be at least close to the university so that it can utilize being there. Again, I don't have any problem with it being in surplus buildings, which they do have at Rancho Katahdadi. So if you can articulate it for her, if I'm not around, does she believe that it's good to be at, and I want to be as clear as I can, at Sonoma State, as she has experienced? Would it be an option to be in some buildings at Rancho Katahdadi, or would she see a great deal of improvement by having it three miles from the university and essentially just in an isolated space where unfortunately the building was built for an elementary school and kids are going to feel very large in a facility that was built for some other use? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that. We'll definitely ask. I wrote it down. Anyone else? Dustin, welcome.
First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Moore for calling out the grand opening of the Verona-Fleddy Ranch and Farmster Project. Once again, January eighteenth, from three until five. It's for all ages, fifty-five and up, under five years old. Come on out. We're going to have a tour starting at three o'clock. I would love to just extend a personal and professional invitation to everybody here to come out and join us. And then last but not least, I wanted to extend gratitude to Ms. Vicky Parker, as she was one of the folks I met with, as well as Damian, in the proposal process, and asked amazing questions and carried the city of Katahdadi's truest intent and vision in that evaluation process. So they're very lucky to have you wherever you're off to, and once again, I hope all of you join me. So thank you, and have a good evening.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, with that, we will go to item eighteen. Any information received after the agenda was posted, unless we consider those comments we have from Mr. Berich, which I will turn in. So we'll put that in there. And we are officially adjourned at nine o'clock. Thank you all very much.